Welcome to this week's meeting of the Rockland Board of Selectmen coming to you live on WRPS from the H. Bernard Monahan Memorial Room at Rockland Town Hall. On the agenda this evening, we have the Holy Family Road Race request, a report on opioid tort legislation, and a report from the NIP Committee. Now here's the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Ed Kimball.
Good evening. Would you all please rise and join us for a pledge of allegiance? Mr. Ryan, would you like to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a quick moment of silence for the people who lost their lives in the Florida school incident. Thank you. Good evening and welcome. Pleased to be advised that this open meeting is being broadcast live and recorded by WRPS for playback on Comcast Channel 14 and Verizon Channel 31. It will also be available for online video on demand viewing at wrpsrockland.com within 24 hours of its conclusion, as are other recently recorded meetings and community events. Please go to wrpsrockland.com for further information. Okay, under community announcements, we have nothing tonight other than the fact that it's school vacation week. With the warm weather, kids are out playing, so please be careful. Minutes. Item number two, open session minutes of February 6, 2018.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of February 6.
Second.
All those in favor? That's unanimous vote, thank you. Item number three, executive session minutes of February 6, 2018.
I make a motion to approve pending our matters are settled.
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Okay, under agenda items, we're going to take one item out of...
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Can we do the Holy Family Road Race?
All right, we'll do Holy Family first, and then we'll take the other ones out of order to do number seven after number four because our Land Use Council has another meeting to attend. Okay, item number four, the annual Holy Family Road Race request for June 9. Mr. Chalka.
Mr. Chairman, we received a letter from, and I'm going to say the name wrong, I know, Posersky. Jim Posersky is the co-chair of the road race. This has become an annual event for them, and it's on June 9 at 10:00 a.m. I know that they're working with the police department to run the road race again, but they do need permission of the board.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor? Unanimous vote, thank you, and good luck. Okay, we're taking item number seven, which is recreational marijuana dispensary zoning out of order. Mr. Galvin?
Good evening, everybody. Robert Galvin, Land Use Council. I've drafted for your consideration a potential article, actually, there's three of them, relating to, for lack of a better way of describing it, recreational marijuana establishments for the town of Rockland. The first thing we do is come up with an article that defines what a marijuana establishment is. We basically look at the state regulation definition of marijuana establishment and incorporated that into our potential bylaw. The second thing we do is, in the second draft article, is establish the authority to have marijuana establishments as a use permitted by special permit from the planning board in the hotel, the industrial park hotel district. We do that by adding that use to the list of permitted uses by special permit, or creating a category because there isn't one now. The third article basically is, the meat and potatoes of the article itself, provides for how the planning board will receive an application, contain some local restrictions, and establishes criteria for the issuance of a special permit. We explain our purposes, we explain the applicability, we have some general requirements, and those are probably what I should go over a little bit with you. All marijuana establishments are going to be located inside of a building as opposed to outdoors. If they're going to be permitted, the hours can be set by the planning board, or if there's another alternative that the board would like me to see me incorporate, I can change that. The state default regulation is that these type of facilities can't be located within 500 feet of a use where children, congregators, schools. The state regulations that are contemplated allow us to be more permissive. What I've proposed here is that we are more permissive and allow within 300 feet of our property boundary. And we measure that distance from the exterior wall of the marijuana facility to the closest boundary line of the abutting property, which is something that new regulations allow us to do. We do have a regulation that would ban smoking, burning, consumption of any product containing marijuana in any type of these establishments. They can't be located in a facility where there's any type of transient housing like a motel or a dormitory, or any type of a movable structure. No facilities can be drive-through. Signage would be regulated so that it wasn't an obvious place where those types of products can be purchased. There wouldn't be any outside display, and the rest of it is basically the special permit criteria, which incorporates our existing criteria, which allows us to consider the effect on the neighborhood that surrounds it, and established conditions. There's certain findings that have to be made by the planning board if it were to approve these uses. There's some limitations on the transfer of the permit and provision for abandonment or discontinuance in the event that the uses are terminated. The last thing I gave you was a draft local sales tax option, which would be adopted by basically adopting the provisions of Chapter 64 and Section 3. The draft that I gave you says a 2% tax, a 3% tax is permissible, so if you want to have the highest potential local revenue from sales tax, you'd make it 3% as opposed to 2%. So happy to answer any questions you have on this. I got some general information from the town administrator who was helpful in having me create this bylaw. This is the type of bylaw that you'll see in other communities like Rockland that are going to regulate the use as opposed to restrict it. Halifax and Marshfield are two communities that are local that are going to be regulating as opposed to restricting. The one thing that I have seen with the other bylaws is it's generally confined to a certain area where it's more business-oriented, away from the residential neighborhoods, so this is not unique to Rockland.
Any questions from your board?
I got a couple. One, I would like to see the hours of operation established by the appointing authority, which would be the Board of Selectmen versus another entity, because now you're adding two people's such rules. You've got to follow two, we're the ones that are the appointing authority, and they send an application with all the information that we get, and everybody else, we already have that stuff. So I don't think it's the planning boards a place to, quite frankly, to be putting hours of operation for anything which we give a license to. Number five, are the marijuana establishments, including transient housing, motels and dormitories? Hotels considered that? What hotels? Can I open one up in the hotel over the hotel district?
They cannot be located inside a hotel.
Doesn't say that.
Marijuana shall not be located inside a building containing residential units, including transient housing such as motels, dormitories, inside a move. We can add hotels to that.
That is, okay, I just wanted to clarify because...
That is transient housing.
I can have a restaurant that sells alcohol in the bottom floor of a hotel, can't I? Don't they have them all over the place?
Sure, yeah.
What's the difference?
Well, do you want it in or out?
Well, I don't care, I just, I want to clarify because, quite frankly...
Well, the reason why this type of...
The rules and regulations written, not just by you, but by the whole system itself, is to impede the progress of getting it up and running.
In this particular case, with transient housing, the idea is you don't want people coming to Rockland to stay here for a few hours, renting a hotel room and using it to consume, and then leaving. So that's why that type of regulation exists. It's not there to prevent people from extended stay, if that's what they wanted to do. It's really to prevent the people that would come here, abuse it, and then leave and cause an issue.
Okay, but I don't, quite frankly, don't see anybody coming to Rockland to buy a joint and renting a $100, $150 hotel room so you can sit there and smoke it and go home. I don't care, I'm not against it.
Whatever the board tells me to do, I'll put it in.
Some of these things I wanted to clarify.
Sure.
That's all. The main thing is, I think the board should be the ones who do the appointing and do all the...
The only reason I wrote it the way I did, Mr. Ryan, was because it has been customary for whatever our special permit granting authority to establish the hours of operation of a business. And I think, you know, there's also the prospect of creating a local licensing operation, which I have to do a little bit more research in, but if we do that, we'd create a general bylaw, maybe authorizing the selectmen to act as a local licensing authority. I'd want to run that by the attorney at the State Cannabis Control Commission as well.
So we don't, we wouldn't automatically do that, then?
Wouldn't automatically. It's usually the site plan approval or the special permit granting authority that determines the hours, but I'm not saying you couldn't by regulation.
So if somebody opens a liquor store in Rockland, they...
No, but that's a little different because the local licensing authority is the Board of Selectmen in that particular circumstance, but even though you regulate the hours, there are certain hours that you cannot regulate. For example, you can't tell them they can't be open after 11 and close before 11. There's some statutory prohibitions even on the selectmen's authority to regulate alcohol.
Thank you.
I just had two questions, pretty distinct. Yep.
It's going to be tough to follow this, and we do want to try and get this written. So I'm going to try and stick with a couple of... Is that a motion that the Board of Selectmen decide the hours of operation?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Any more discussion on it? Or do you want to hear out the entire...
Well, I think that this kind of...
Let's take one at a time, yeah, let's take one at a time, yeah.
Too much?
Yeah, too much, yeah.
My only question in terms of, like, a licensing authority, are there isn't one currently being, considered by the Cannabis Control Commission?
They are the licensing authority.
No, but like, in terms of like, a local level, like, are they considering yet any type of local licensing process?
The draft state regulations do not contain a local licensing process, so that's why I said I would like to review it.
There is a set of standards that the state is saying, these are the standards, unless you adopt a local standard.
Okay.
So this is where you get to put your imprint on each and every one of the, this is an attempt at a local standard.
Well, if I may, with regards to hours and regulation, it's my understanding that any marijuana, recreational marijuana facility that's going to be licensed, they have to opt into some sort of host community agreement with the town.
Positive, absolutely.
So we could utilize that host community agreement, if I'm not mistaken, to...
Negotiate some hours.
Negotiate the hours.
Or restrictions on hours.
Or restrict the hours.
And that would be by the selectmen.
Under that agreement.
Positively.
Because before they can actually go forward...
It's an application requirement under this draft bylaw that they have to already have in place that host community agreement, and that would be negotiated with the selectmen.
Which has to also be identify the location, the building, the proposed location where they're going, as part of the application process. The state will not act on the application until they hear back from the town that the applicant has satisfied those conditions, i.e. a host community agreement. There's a window of time, I believe, as well, Bob, for that to happen.
Yeah, well, a host community agreement, the maximum term could be five years, but you can extend it voluntarily by agreement. So perhaps that's where we would begin negotiating it with them in a host community agreement, and then even though their financial obligations to the town via the host community agreement might expire after five years, perhaps we could extend the hours as a part of the continuing agreement.
So would we then, I know there's a motion on the board, but would we amend that motion, council, so it'll be subject to a host community agreement for the hours? So then the hours can be negotiated in a host community agreement versus a different board coming on on another year and changing the hours potentially, or in fact having, we'll say, a change in the board, and then someone saying, you know what, we're going to keep them open 24/7.
Yeah, but what's the legal...
Well, what I would say is, the hours of operation of marijuana shall be set by the planning board, if not previously established by the Board of Selectmen, under a host community agreement. So there's a default, so we never...
Makes sense, yeah.
...without something.
Would that, would that cover what your concerns were, Larry?
Yes.
Could they make, did the planning board make it stricter, or would it have to be what we say?
Well, that's why I said if not previously established by the Board of Selectmen under a host community agreement, then that would control it.
Then they would have to, all right.
It would be part of their requirements, they would have already met it before they showed up to the planning board.
I'll drop my motion. Do you want to keep it?
Well, you want to make that motion.
Okay.
So you want to amend the motion?
I'll second. Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Any other questions? You had some questions, Peter, sorry.
I had, yeah. So I just have two concerns, one with Sub C, Sub 3, which is the distance.
Yes.
Given that we're limiting it only to a hotel district, I mean, I don't think it's something we can find out here, it's more of just, I'd like to see, we already have some child congregating facilities there, so I'd like to see some concentric circles that this map is just, has no scale on it, so it's really hard for me to determine already which areas of H1 would be...
Available.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
So that way we can really determine if, you know, what is proper, whether we set it at 500, 300, 100. I think, I think we'd want to know how much of that district is already sort of out of...
Yeah, so you know whether you actually have realistic business opportunities.
Right, right, because if there's no realistic business opportunity, we want, I think, that's something we'd want to know.
So what we, I guess what we could do is take all the known facilities that are mentioned here and draw that circle around it and let you know what that is.
That'd be helpful.
Sure.
And then the other thing that I just had a question on was Sub D, Sub 4A, marijuana retailer. So based upon the regs, marijuana retailers include, I'm trying to read my chicken scratch here...
Lots of things.
Lots of things, including cultivators, testing labs, manufacturer retailers, or any other type of marijuana business.
Right.
So I guess my question is, do we, do we want, I guess it's not a personal issue to me, but do we want to keep it that broad, or any other marijuana businesses, or can we say, and I'm not saying we should do this, but can we say just cultivation, or just this, or just...
Well, you could do any of those things. You can be more specific if you want. You could say marijuana retail is exclusive of social consumption establishments, if you wanted to say something like that, although that's not allowed by right anyways until something else happens. I have no problem limiting it to, you know, fewer than the general category.
I haven't really thought about it, like, fully, to be honest, because I haven't, you know, thought through this, I haven't had a lot of time to think through the bylaw, but it's just a question I had to pose to the whole board, if that's something we wanted to entertain, or if we want to keep it open, or, I don't know.
I personally, I'd like to see it kept open till we see what actually develops. We have the draft regulations, they're not going to become actual regulations until the 15th of March, and then we've also heard, if anyone's followed the legislature or some other local people in government, whether it's the governor, or senators, or reps, they've all weighed in under the Public Comment Commission portion to the Cannabis Control Commission, and everyone, from what I can see, is asking them to roll out the recreational portion for retailers, but take a step back or two right now for any of the things that might be consumption, because when they initially rolled off consumption, they had proposed you can get edibles at a restaurant, you can go through and go to the massage parlor, and you can have an oil, you know, to treat you, or any of those things, which it took everybody honestly by surprise. So I don't think they've actually vetted all that.
That's probably the most controversial aspect.
Yeah, and I think what you're going to see is they're probably going to take a step back from that and maybe implement that at a later date.
Certainly seems like that's what Governor Baker was...
I mean, because, just from, I've been doing an extensive amount of reading, any research, and also looking at surrounding communities, states, and even countries for what they've been doing, and it looks like they're going to, in my opinion, they're going to take a step back. In either, in either event, we would still have time to go through, once we see what the regulations are, to enact something, even if we had to do something...
Well, you could always even amend it as long as it's within the scope of the article, even on the town meeting floor if you had to.
With town council approval of that, so, so we do have some options. I mean, right now, what we're trying to do is make sure that we can meet the timeframe so that when they start accepting applications, that we're going to be okay, so they're not going to be out there, not have any zoning or any areas to place them in, and then it becomes townwide.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, that's the, that's the premise behind the whole thing. Like anything, we may need to go back and take another bite at it, once we see what happens with the state regulations, because we don't know. I know that right now it's legal, they're going to implement selling it to, you know, to the public, and there's 107 pages of draft regulations, and I've spoken to, you know, numerous people, as well as Mr. Galvin, and there seems to be a lot of things that would help protect the public, and at the same time, there's a lot of things that we would have to really get educated on to make sure we make the right decisions in the future, but for now, I think if we keep it open, we're not going to limit ourselves to potentially create a loophole. So that's my own opinion, but...
You know, the other thing is, once we do settle on a draft form for our warrant, we should send these draft regulations in, even if we haven't got to our town meeting, so that the state will know if they're going to license anybody in Rockland, that these are what we've published and intend to adopt at our town meeting. Because the effective date of zoning regulations is the day of the first publication of the notice of the planning board hearing, and we would want this CCC to know that this is what we were going to do.
Which makes perfect sense.
I'll handle that, too, so...
Because from my understanding, once an application is submitted...
But the CCC is going to start receiving applications on April 1st.
Correct.
And on April 1st, we won't have reached our town meeting, but we may have, we may know we're having a public hearing on the adoption of these regulations, and we're going to want to tell them that this is what's going to happen for our town.
That makes perfect sense. Anybody else have any questions?
I just have two, two questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One, on, in Section D, number 4C, marijuana transportation or distribution facility, is that a food, like a cultivation facility, I imagine?
It would.
Okay, so, covered there, and then...
It might also be a place where it's grown somewhere else, brought here, packaged and resold, or distributed amongst, for example, you might have a grower in some other part of the state...
Yep.
...that can't keep it in the western part of the state, that's bringing it locally to be resold to other retailers.
Okay.
That's could be, that's probably the type of facility that we're really talking about.
Got you, but I like, it could include cultivation activities or...
Yeah, sure.
...as well, okay. My second question, in terms of, I guess, this is more of a consistency question, going back to Section C3, the 300 feet?
Yes.
And how, where we're aligning, and if, and if it matters if we align with our existing medical marijuana?
It doesn't. Our medical marijuana setback is 500 feet, and it's measured property line to property line. This is 300 feet, and it's measured from the exterior wall of the facility to the closest boundary line of the facility that's in this use that we want to buffer.
That's what got you.
So it is different.
I'm thinking aloud here, but if we have a medical marijuana facility...
That has more stringent regulation than this, should that be changed? Is that your potential...
Exactly, because, I mean, like, we know, and we don't have one right now, but we know the medical marijuana will be the first in line for recreational, conceivably, also should we make...
There's a preference, actually, for the conversion of those facilities, given the first chance.
Yeah, so should we make that uniform going forward, or just...
Well, if they do convert, they'll be subject to a less stringent regulation.
It's true, so they're already covered, right?
Correct.
Sorry, it's been a long day, so I couldn't get that all the way through.
Can they do both?
They can't do both right now.
Okay, that makes sense.
And I guess if, if they're going to do both, they actually have to have wholly distinct facilities.
Separate storefronts, okay.
Yeah.
And then my last question, on the last article raising, the local option, you have 2% in terms of the sales tax going back to Rockland, like, is that the highest in terms...
No, it's actually 3%. And I think when I put this in here, I was using it from another town, but I think the reality is it should be 3%.
Oh, yeah.
The town has the, the highest percent it can.
I make a motion that we have the local option at 3%.
Second.
All those in favor? Oh, thank you.
Good times. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Ed Kimball? On D3, for the impact fee as well, is that also capped at 3%?
No.
It's not?
Nope.
Five.
Do you want to up that up to 5%?
It's 5?
Sure.
Do you want to have the ability to negotiate that up to the 5? You don't have to, but I think you want to have the ability to.
I'll second that.
Yeah, I got to double check that, but I think it goes to 5.
I believe it was 3 and 3.
3 and 3.
It was, you want it to 5 years, that's what I'm thinking, the 5.
It was 5 years, it was 3 and 3. At least the seminar I went to, but those are only draft.
3, yeah, that's the final one we'll look at.
It was, the way it was, the way it was set up was, if you opted in for the local fees tax to go up, or the excise tax of up to 3%, that would then, between the state, between the sales tax of 6 and 1/4, the state's rate, I believe, of 10.75, and then the local rate of 3% would give you an overall rate of 20% on anybody who were to purchase, okay?
Mr. Chairman, if we just, in that same Section 3, struck the words, "may include an impact fee," and stopped it, and cross out of up to 3%.
And we can just negotiate that.
Right, an impact fee of gross sales to be paid to the town, then we'll negotiate it. Strike the words of up to 3%.
And then at that point, too, through you, Mr. Chairman, we might have a better idea of what the market is, and all in the market conditions as well, so we can...
You may have to compete with surrounding towns.
Exactly.
Well, we had, I mean, it's funny you say that, because the concern out there is you have medical dispensaries, and you have people who have, they actually have to pay to get an annual medical marijuana card, and the thought process was, some of these people may actually drop out of the medical marijuana program and then go to the recreational side because you won't need that card. However, what was brought to my attention was that the medical is not taxed, okay, where the recreational will be, so one may offset the other, and the people who are actually going in for the medical stuff, stuff is prescribed actually for their ailments, and certain things actually work, you know, based on what's in or out of the product, you know, in order to, we'll say, produce the product. You know, some have, some of the effects are actually taken out of the marijuana, so only the, we'll say the...
Cannaboids.
Well, pain avoidance, that's a good word.
THC level is the one that gets your loopy in, the cannabinoids, it's what heals you of your aches and pains.
So some of it may be different, and that's why they seem to think the medical marijuana will sustain itself along with the recreational marijuana, so for those very reasons. But I'm not a doctor, so I wouldn't know. So do we have on this last, are we going to amend that, then?
Yeah, I just, I've actually made that note, so I'll make that change.
We are going to strike of up to 3%.
Of up to 3%.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor? That's a vote, thank you.
I have just one more question, based on what you just mentioned, Mr. Chairman. Going back to, also going to your point, Mr. Chairman, like in, like in my question earlier, oh, in terms of there being a need for like, a medical marijuana market still, like, it seems to kind of inverse, then, that we would have the medical marijuana, oh, in terms of zoning and distance from our childcare facilities, oh, all having more stringent requirements, then, correct?
Yeah.
So that could be something we want to, oh, visit separately?
I think we... I think we can revisit that. It would be a simple change to our zoning bylaw relating to medical. Medical establishments, so.
I mean, because, I don't know, it would call me naive or green.
I have to double check to see whether the state regulations that relate to medical, though, allow for the same flexibility that recreational now appears to contemplate. Because that 500-foot distance came from a state regulation for medical.
And where the 300-foot distance come from?
Well, there's more flexibility built into the draft regulations for recreational than there was into the medical. So, expressly allows the town to be less rigid in enforcement of that distance. If there isn't a provision in our local bylaw about where it could be, the default is 500 feet.
I understand.
At the seminar that I attended, they actually recommended going 100 feet, because they wanted them to be closer together, so that they'd be, I guess you could say almost like, if you went from restaurant to restaurant to restaurant, I'm not saying they're restaurants, but I'm using that as a simile, that if it was a restaurant, you'd walk from one to another. And the idea was, so you promote an area where you could go and walk in and out, it'd just be a different type of store.
One might not have what you want.
Well, what happens is.
Go to the next one.
If you really start doing some research on these, certain facilities get known for a certain type of product, whether that be the oil, or whether that be a cream, or whether that be something that you ingest, or something that you smoke, or something that you use in other ways. So, everyone has their own specialty, and it's almost like they're making their their signature product, and that's what's gonna draw, we'll say, a following. It's no different than clothing. You know, if you wear a polo shirt, or you wear a different, it's the same idea, you know. It's a product, it's a retail product, and it's like, if you take alcohol, I mean, you take, you know, if you look at all the beer commercials, you know, each one will claim to be the king of beers or something. It's all, you know, marketing. But, again, it's new frontier, it is legal, and we're trying to figure that out. So, when we discuss going through with the 300-foot, we'll say, buffer, because the state, according to the seminar I went to, they were saying, other than the schools, the schools were a default buffer of 500 feet unless you choose to set something different. And then you go through, and they recommended doing 100 feet for the other facilities. I thought that was too close initially, so we didn't go that way. But when you start thinking about the H1 district, there's really no schools in the H1 district other than what Ms. Hall brought up, which was, there's potentially maybe some schools for gymnastics or lacrosse, or there may be swimming school or something there, which would bring us to the next question. If in fact, somebody was already cited in a location, and then a school wanted to move in.
They would be grandfathered in.
So, again, because that was gonna be another concern when it's time for renewal of a license, which everything, from what I've read, goes through the state. We, at some point, we can actually set up our own licensing for it, but they still get a state license, just much like they do with the ABC now for liquor license, and they still have to get a liquor license from, an alcohol use license from the town, it's the same type of thing. So, all these things are still developing, but until we actually see the actual regulations on March 15.
I think it's important to understand what Ms. Hall suggested, to understand what opportunities there, because in our final version of this bylaw, you wanna be the least restrictive, so that if you had to increase the restrictive nature of the bylaw, you could do that. It could be arguably.
It's easier to go up than to go down.
It's easier to go up than go down, so.
Do I understand that the only place right now that we could put any kind of legal marijuana recreational place would be in the H1 zone?
Correct.
Currently, currently, under the, under this change that's proposed before tonight, you would put that in the H1 district. The premise behind that, Larry, was the state has indicated that anybody that was gonna have a, we will say, a medical marijuana license, they would be the first, have the first option to go get a recreational license. That's already been vetted through zoning, there's already special permits and things in place. We currently have one medical marijuana facility under construction. There were two to three others that were letter of no opposition, which we don't know where they stand with their licensing. The current person who's under construction now has what they call a provisional license. They actually can't get the final license from the state until the facility's built out and inspected. It's kind of, I know it sounds backwards, but they have to prove that they've done everything they were supposed to do in order to secure that final license. So, when you start talking about all these other different entities that the state's gonna license, when you read through the through the draft regulations, it could be cultivation, it could be just testing, it could be something that they have a company that would transport, but in order to transport, you're supposed to have a contract or ties to a recreational or medical facility, so to allow you to transport. So there's a lot of different things. And there's a tremendous amount of oversight in it. Not only between security cameras and reporting, tagging, inventory and all that stuff, labeling, testing, there's a tremendous amount that goes in it. It's almost like we're starting with the food industry all over again, regulating the food industry, you know, like, I mean, that's what it seems like. So this is, I mean, this is not gonna be the first pass. We're gonna have multiple passes at some point in the future. I mean, this is something, so we can at least establish something, possibly have some facilities that would satisfy the vote in public who voted for the majority of it, and still make sure that we're doing it in a manner that's not gonna, we'll say, overwhelm everybody by having a marijuana facility on every corner right now in town. And then, as the state, I'm gonna guess the state's gonna do the same thing. At some point, they're gonna look at it, and they're gonna go back and make some changes and amendments, and based on what's out there, and we'll be doing the same thing. And we could go through, and it may be a restaurant. I mean, right now, the state says, if a restaurant serves edibles, they can't serve alcohol, but they can serve edibles, but they'd have to have a certain percentage of the business, so we'd have to figure out how that would work. Now, we do happen to have some restaurants in the H1 district, so that is a possibility. And as far as social consumption, I mean, we do have some facilities in town where you could have a social event, just much like your house, but those wouldn't be able to sell marijuana. That's the difference, because if you're licensed to sell, there's different rules and regulations, so. It's a little different. And it's all new to me, too, because I've been reading a lot on it, and some of the stuff is very confusing, going back and forth, what you can do in one, but you can't do on the other, so. Hope I answered your question, I hope I didn't add more question to your question.
My only thing is, it's basically another type of liquor store. You got a marijuana store, you got a liquor store. You're selling things to adults. It's legal to buy. You go into a beer store, you buy a six-pack of beer, you walk out the door. I walk in with my kid, don't have a kid within 100 miles of one of these places. They walk by the street in that general vicinity, you can't have one. And we have liquor stores in every corner, we have restaurants that sell alcohol to the general public, we got people that sell cigarettes in every store, kids can walk in and out. I just don't see the overwhelming restrictions that are being applied here. It's like, it's definitely, if I had a business, I'd be looking for the discrimination thing, because quite frankly, you're doing the same thing, you're selling a product to adults that they wanna consume. Why does it have to be 10,000 regulations? You gotta have it locked behind the door someplace where nobody can see it. No sign on the door, no nothing. I mean, you know, it's the economy, we sell things. We have beer signs in every window, and if there's any place that sells a beer, there's beer signs of one sort of another. Kids go by on their way to school every day and look at those signs, and they think, where can I get my beer? I don't see the difference why the state or the town has to go through the hoops and the jumps, and the 500-feets, and the 7000s, this, and, you know, don't do this and don't do that, when it's basically the same commodity.
Has Mr. Galvin said, though, these are the state regulations that we need to abide by? Where we can have latitude is where you have the distancing between facilities. And then, I'm sure, there's gonna be a lot of feedback once other communities actually start having recreational dispensaries in their communities. It's like anything else. It's new, so people are taking slow steps towards it. So we have to crawl before we can walk, and then before we run. And I'm not saying that your concerns aren't legitimate, because I personally don't smoke, but that doesn't stop me or someone else from going into a convenience store and buying a pack of cigarettes. If I drink alcohol, I know it can't be served to underage children, although I have on occasion taken my son or daughter in to buy alcoholic beverages, you know, at a package store. They weren't buying, but I was told that I could not have my son carry something off of me, because he was underage at one time, so. There are rules and regulations the same as them, just as you can't have children sit at a bar if they're not of age. You can be in a restaurant that says alcohol, which is different, because the state looks at it differently. And again, I didn't make those rules either.
These are all state regulations, so.
I realize that, I just, I just wanna put it out there that, you know, quite frankly, the way they've dragged their feet on it, and the way the regulations are putting against the towers, and the hell is the state ever gonna make a dime on it? And all they've done, quite frankly, is kept it in the guy's house. You know, you get on the street to somebody's house, and you say, I want something, and they say, here you go. I'm not paying no exorbitant fees, I'm not paying my 20% taxes. You know, and I don't have to drive over to the A1 district, or H1 district.
Well, we're trying to implement it, so we're taking a different approach in Rockland, we're trying to implement it, but we're trying to do it under the guise of the law, and we're also trying to do it so that everybody knows the rules up front. Those rules may change in time, and I'm sure, you know, in the future, it may be Carmen is going to Dunkin' Donuts to get in a coffee. I mean, I don't know. But, right now, we have to do it based on what we have in front of us. I did speak to the police chief, and we had a similar discussion. The discussion was, you know, he doesn't support it. However, it's the law, and he's put in place to go through and make sure that he upholds the laws. So if it's legal, it's legal. If it's illegal, then he, you know, pursues criminal intent for any of that stuff, and does what he has to do to prosecute people. But this is legal, so now we're trying to implement it. And I think in time, you may see it, as the stigma goes away with it, and as they have more data, that you're gonna see either some tweaks that are gonna make it less restrictive, or there might be different aspects of it, they may make more restrictive, pending what happens with it. I don't know. But, anybody else have any questions? I know Bob has to get to another meeting.
Did you want me to stay for the in-law apartment?
If you don't mind.
No, I mean, if we could discuss that, that'd be great.
Okay. So, you have a question? Yeah, we can have public comments.
I'm just curious, Bob, is there any regulation in the state that it has to be a planning board? This is a special permit?
It doesn't. There's no, there's no specific location. It's not directed to anyone in particular.
In the zoning article, special permit, shouldn't it be the zoning board?
It could be zoning or planning, and selectmen if there was no zoning or planning.
Any reason why it's planning and not zoning?
It was much, it was much like a liquor license, I think. I mean, if thereby right, we'll say by state that you're allowed to do it, and we have an area to do it in, the idea was just to make sure you're conformed. So we were trying to set it up so that somebody knew what, we'll say, the rules were coming to our town. You go to planning if you make it, but part of the whole, and the people, the feet to the fire, is we actually have a host community agreement, so we can, we can do a lot more with the host community agreement, because they need that document before they can actually complete their application. So it gives us a little bit more leverage than we would typically have over someone coming into town.
But isn't it by right, it's by special permit?
By special permit, but it's, when I say by right, it's allowed in that use, that district, by special permit, sorry. You got me?
In my mind, the planning board doesn't have the experience with special permits. We're set up, we have all the knowledge of special permits, the conditions and all that. The buffer, the 500 feet, if you stick to 500 feet, you can give a variance for certain areas, if it'll fit in. Planning board can't give variances. You know, you're going back and forth. We do medical by special permit, by zoning. You know, you should have it a distance from.
They have counsel, they have, they have counsel, they have, you know, consultants that can help them draft proper decisions. So I don't think that the argument that they don't have a lot of experience with special permit granting is totally relevant, because they have people who can assist them with that, and let them know what sort of things that they should be looking for and asking about. But I do think that the issue is more than just, it deals with more than just the land. I think it does deal with more of a planning aspect, and how we want to, you know, how we wanna characterize that particular part of our community in a sense. I think it might make more sense for, I think, for planning rather than for zoning. That's my opinion.
Planning boards elected. They can help their feet to the fire. Zoning board's not elected, they're appointed, unless, and the zoning board's not making good decisions based on what the board says, we have to find somebody to replace you. If the planning board makes wrong decisions, then the voters stand up and say, I'm running for the planning board, because these guys aren't doing a job, and they're feet in the hell to the fire. You can get rid of them, you can't get rid of you. No offense, but you can't.
Yeah, you can, not reappoint.
Yeah, not reappoint, but we have to have somebody to appoint. Wanna walk in next time, they say, we don't reappoint, Bob? And we all have nobody to replace you? Doesn't make sense for us to do that, even if we didn't like you. Because it doesn't, it stops the continuation of what you're trying to accomplish. But do you, the other board, if the planning board, I'd rather see the planning board make a decision versus the zoning board, because they're elected. That's different. Pointed is appointed, elected is elected. You held your feet to the fire, just like the rest of us are. If we don't do what we're supposed to do, two years from now, they say, you're fine. You know, two years from now, if we don't have somebody to replace you, we can't get rid of you. You've got three years already. I'm just saying, not just you, but anybody on the board.
Yeah.
So, I mean, the planning board, their feet to the hell to the fire. I would rather see the elected official get the authority versus the appointed official. And quite frankly, I think anything that has to do with the license issuing of a license, or anything part to do with it, should come from the from the board's selectmen. But I guess we don't have that licensing authority now, right?
Not right now, no.
Right now. So how do we adopt that? Why can't we just adopt?
Well, that's the one, the issue I'm gonna go back, and I'm gonna talk to the CCC about.
Additionally, I think Attorney Galvin said that you can set some conditions in the process of the host community agreement.
Good, I like that tool.
That's good, because we should, you know, reexamine that, then, and see how the weekend.
That's what you have for leverage, and then when you have renewal of license, I mean, typically, what we typically do, if we have a renewal, we see if there's any violations or outstanding violations for the applicant. And that's typically when you can have them, we'll say, correct any of those violations. I've been on both sides of it, going to land court on behalf of the town for zoning issues, and I've also gone to both planning and zoning meetings, and I've gone to joint meetings. And it seems to be, and there seems to be a disconnect with the public as well. Zoning sometimes allows certain things, but then it still has to follow back through the balance of the other departments for the planning to continue, whether it's planning, conservation, before you can go through and get your building permit to actually construct. And some people think it's purely zoning. Zoning allows you to do certain things based on the bylaws and the regulations that are established. Planning then takes the next step further, okay? And then, if there aren't any violations, we also have a zoning enforcement officer, which acts on behalf of both both committees, if you will. And then we have land use council that actually represents both if need be. So, there's still provisions there to protect everybody. The biggest issue is, right now, is we've already established things with medical marijuana, and we thought there was gonna be this big onslaught coming at the town. We've only got one that's actually made it past the threshold right now. And based on everything I'm reading, based on our population and the surrounding population, these facilities are only gonna be able to sustain or support themselves, and we're not gonna have this huge explosion that people are thinking about, because it's not gonna be profitable, you're gonna remember. The medical marijuana was for not-for-profit, and recreational is for profit, so they have to be able to make money. And if they can't make money, they're not gonna, they're not gonna be in town, because they have to be enough of a clientele to support them. I mean, that's similar to why we don't have certain stores up downtown, because we don't have the traffic. I know people would say that we need more, you know, that we have enough traffic, but unfortunately for retailers, they want traffic, because. but unfortunately for retailers, they want traffic because that means head counts, car counts, that gets people into their facility so they can sell merchandise. So it's a little bit different. And so it's a different, I guess, when you look at the recreational component, we have to look at it similarly, you know? Because we're trying to, we're trying to be open, but at the same time, have an area where it's going to be less detrimental to the town right now. And that was the thought process behind it. Not to say that we don't need to go through and maybe this gets amended or something. I mean, I mean, we've gone through on an annual basis and tweaked zoning and planning articles because we find that sometimes they work, sometimes they don't. But sometimes there's an instance that we need to do something else because nobody thought of it at the time the article was put in 20 somewhat years ago or two years ago or last year. And we go back to the table. It's our best guess based on what is happening currently. So I hope that answered it. Any other questions from the public? So we'll move on to the warrant article pools as an item number eight. Specifically, there was one regarding a zoning change for in-laws by law. So if you would, Mr. Galvin?
Yes, I was given a draft bylaw to review by Mr. Chalka that changes the way accessory apartments are permitted in Rockland. And reviewing it, it looked like currently, accessory apartments are allowed by special permit in residential and business districts, subject to certain limitations. It's a special permit granted by the zoning board of appeals. The proposed changes allow the accessory apartments to exist by right in the three, or excuse me, four residential districts of the town. Then they would not be permitted in any of the business districts. There's a maximum and minimum threshold in terms of the size. And there's a requirement that the accessory apartments basically continue to meet the yard requirements and there were a less stringent parking requirement. I did review it. I put that draft as it came to me in a format that could be used to submit it into the warrant. I didn't make any substantive changes, waiting basically to hear the board's comments on the proposed change. The only thing that I noted, it is customary to limit accessory apartments to persons that are related to one another. And I don't know whether you want to include that in somewhere or not. The new proposed bylaw doesn't have a limitation of a relationship. So those are my comments. I did give you a quick memo. Hopefully you've had a chance to see it. It's only about a half a page long, just kind of highlighting some of the things that I thought were materially different.
I know, looking at it, I've been to a couple of the previous hearings, we'll say, when they have in-law issues. Some of them seem to be a restriction on the square footage, which is in here, I believe.
Yep, it is.
The other issue that has been brought up at some times has been parking or off-street parking.
Right.
Because we do not allow public parking, especially during the winter months, right now we have a parking ban. So I know that in some, some of the hearings I've attended, that the applicants needed to go through and provide a plot plan or something to indicate that there was adequate parking on.
Yeah, it's actually technically a special permit, so you're usually going to get a plan showing that the proposed alteration of the structure will still meet the setback requirements and you'll usually get a rendering of what the building's going to look like because the special permit requirement is there that the homes still look like a single family home. And the doors to accessory apartments are kind of interior doors, so the structures as they exist continue to look like.
But the way, the way it's proposed, if I'm not mistaken, is it will be special permit in R1, right?
No.
So maybe we should start with that. So initially, when, the reason for this bylaw is so that we can check another box, well, one reason is to check another box on our, on Baker's Housing Choice Plan. So Baker's Housing Choice Plan is going to be run a lot like the Green Communities Plan where communities need to select a certain number of, we'll say, a menu of options to loosen some restrictions in regards to housing. This is one of them. And what this will allow us to do is it will allow us to access grant money and hopefully we can use that, my hope is we can use that to sort of deal with our utility issue because we have a housing production plan that Mr. Ryan worked on and we have the 40R that everybody's worked so aggressively on. But right now, we're really bookended by our ability to produce new units based upon our utilities. And we're also bookended by the fact that there's substantial costs associated with the upgrades of this utility. So my hope is, is that by passing this bylaw, we'll be able to check another one of those boxes under Baker's plan, which will allow us to be more competitive when we go to apply for grants. Additionally, I think it sort of makes sense, given the current situations going on in many families, which are people caring for aging parents as well as children returning home after college that seem to stick around for a while. So I think that it does make some sense too for some flexible housing arrangements for families that are in that position. What I did do though is the, the current legislation was not super specific on what as-of-right meant. Because it was based on the green communities, green communities didn't require as-of-right, for instance, for wind everywhere. It allowed you to just put it somewhere. So I wrote this and then I actually called DHCD to ask them exactly what they meant by as-of-right. And their response was, it does not have to be in every district, that as long as there is a substantial and real change from what it was previously and it complies with the spirit of, of the underlying reasoning for, for the law, that that would be, that would be enough. And that what they would require us to submit is a copy of our, of our zoning map indicating where those districts are. So I spoke with a member of the zoning board who said that, you know, R1 may be problematic. I respect that opinion. And I, when I approached DHCD, I said, you know, what would it, could we make R1 special permit and then R2, 3, and 4 as-of-right? And they said that would be fine as long as it's not just like a sliver of your town. And it was real change. So I wasn't sure if, you know, here tonight, if that's something we might want to look at. I, I respect the word of the zoning board member that, that R1 may be complicated, complicated for, for the community. So I just wanted to put that out there as a thought.
Well, I, I can see, definitely see two sides of it, having college-aged children who can't get out, getting older, thinking about, all right, do I sell to them or do I just carve off a place so I can have my own and let them have the rest of the place? So I don't know. So I can, I can actually, you know, I guess you could say commiserate with, you know, what has happened to some people. Because I think the intent of it is to allow our younger generation to still be able to have the affordability to live in town until they get off their feet, get going. And at the same time, our seniors who have outgrown their homes or have been getting to senior or sell their homes, they can actually maintain a residence or maintain their residence and still have the ability to say.
I do think hearing even those comments though, you want to kind of reinsert the family relationship back into this because.
My concern though was how do you enforce that? Do you know what I mean? Is it just?
Usually require the provision of a, a statement under oath that the person that's living there, I mean, there's a, there's a honesty and integrity part to any of those types of things. But I've been in court, including recently, where people say that someone's related to somebody and whether they are or they're not is debatable. But, you know, if you get them under oath and they've lied to you, then there are consequences for that and.
That would be filed with the building, with the building inspector?
Yeah, you'd usually have it just filed on an annual basis with the building inspector, the relationship between the parties. I mean, that's what it is right now.
What about, oh, I'm sorry, Larry.
If you saw, so I get down the street and I don't have any relatives and there's this beautiful house there with an in-law apartment in it, up for sale, and I buy it. I don't have any relatives that I could give it to. So what does that mean? That means I can't.
Well, that's the policy decision you guys all have to make.
So is that, is that apartment non-rentable?
It would not be.
Can you collect rent from your in-laws for living there?
Well, you can if they're related to you because that would be a lawful apartment. If they're not related to you, that would, and it was an R1 district, it would probably be real problematic. That's truly the only single-family district of the town. The 2, 3, and 4s are single, single-family, multifamily, you know, or single-family, two-family, and/or multifamily districts.
So it wouldn't, it wouldn't do anybody to invest in a property like that because you can't use it unless you have family.
No, I don't, I don't think anybody's talking about eliminating it anywhere. I think the question is, do you regulate it by special permit in the R1 district and allow it by right in the other districts? I think that's potentially the issue.
I do agree on that issue.
Yeah. But I, I mean, it is very common, almost everywhere, to have some type of a kinship relationship. And, and by the way, Rockland's bylaw is very broad. You could be an aunt, uncle, niece, nephew, or a, you know, that's pretty broad because some families are not even, some towns don't define it that broadly.
My concern was just the ability to enforce that. So one of the things I was, I was thinking about was, and this may be out there, but one of the things I was thinking about is by, one thing that's easier to enforce is to ensure that the person living in the principal residence is the owner, right? And that therefore, if they, hypothetically, if they leased it to somebody, they wouldn't want to lease it to some crazy person. They wouldn't want to live next to somebody who was problematic. They'd want to live.
Well, remember this, not only do you have owners.
Yeah.
But you can also have life tenants.
Yeah, right, right.
It's very common for people to sell their home to their son or their daughter or a relative and say, "I'm giving it to you now, but I'm going to live there for the rest of my life."
Yeah.
And a permanent occupant like that for an indefinite period of time also probably should have the right to create an apartment because they have the right to live there for the rest of their lives.
Right. Well, they're a possessory owner, aren't they?
They are.
They're a possessory owner. They're just not the owner in fee, but they're still a possessory owner.
Correct. They are. So I would think it's an owner or a long-term, and there's a phrase that I.
I just want to make sure whatever we put in here is enforceable. I don't want to put in, I mean, I can, I get throwing the language in there, but how do you enforce it?
Well, we're not the bedroom police and we don't go knocking on the doors. Usually what happens is Mr. Ruble will get a complaint from a neighbor that's sick and tired of the dog barking and Bo, by the way, you know, he's got Uncle Charlie and Uncle Charlie's 10 sons living there.
That's how all zoning.
Yes.
Because it's a neighbor who calls on another neighbor.
Right. Well, that's usually how, unfortunately, that's how we get it.
Tom, you had a question or a comment?
Yes, can I get to the, no?
Yep, come on up. Speaking of enforcement.
Here you go. Tom Ruble's only enforcement officer. I just, I would just like to mention that we have started about two years ago that we sent letters out, I think there was like 75 letters we sent out to in-law apartments. In return, I can get you that application if you'd like to see it, the homeowners to sign it and to let us know who's living in the apartment. And then we, in return, find out to see if they're family-related. Like, like the council said, it's broad. It could be your sister, it could be your daughter, your aunt, your uncle. But we do that every year and we just started that three years ago. It was never done before. If it did not get recorded, instead of sending them to the zoning board, I will ask them to go and get it recorded.
At the registry?
Yes. Once they get.
Record the special permit.
For the special permit, yeah.
Years ago, they didn't record.
Right.
And therefore, they'll, they'll give me a recording and we'll, we'll put it to sleep. I would highly recommend you being chairman of the Town of Rockland zoning bylaw committee review committee, that we let this go to that board to review, to get this straightened out. Because it's something that needs to be followed up on instead of just having everybody willy-nilly on the house. I think it's a great idea, but let's get some conditions on it. And that's about all I have to say.
I'm, I'm just concerned that we, that we still allow it, because if we don't allow it as-of-right, if we make the changes and it's not considered as-of-right, then it doesn't check our box for us and we're spinning our own wheels. So I mean, I'm all about conditions if they're, if they make sense and they, you know, still allow us to qualify by right.
Yeah, yeah. And I think it's a great idea. I just think it needs to be reviewed.
Because you want to make sure if, if it's not going to check the box off of the housing plan, it doesn't make sense to change what's not broken right now.
Right.
So we would have to probably look at that, but time constraints, do we have enough time to do that, Bob?
We have, all articles have to be submitted by March 1st, number one, but the board will at the March 6th meeting review any additional articles and/or revisions to make a decision.
Yeah, also add that it was mentioned earlier about a sale of a house with an in-law apartment on it that becomes non-avoid after the house is sold, according to our bylaw.
What, an apartment becomes non-avoid?
Special permit becomes non-avoid with a property owner.
It goes with the people, not the property.
Hypothetically speaking, you, you might not even need to change the existing bylaws that related to these type of apartments in the R1 zone if that's what you decide, but you could allow them by right in the other districts, you know?
With some conditions or caveat.
We would maintain the best of what we think is important from the special permit process and incorporate it into the as-of-right in the R2 through 4s.
So they still have to meet certain provisions in order to be as-of-right?
Just a couple that I think needed to be added back in, but nothing material.
Okay. Any other comments on the bylaw? Anybody else in the audience? Mr. Manzouli?
One of my big concerns is a lot of these lots are 50, 75 foot frontage. You start doing that, I mean, like R2 is all specifics being built on and all those. Trying to get a second unit in there or a parting, you're going to have an issue. Wyman's Fields, that's all R2. You start adding apartments by right, you're going to be willy-nilly, there's no lot size, you should have a minimum lot size, you should have a minimum frontage to get these in by right. You should have, be able to, if you go back to the relation, the other thing is, right now, two family in an R2, you need 65,000 whatever square feet. If I have a subdivision in an R2, I could put all single-family homes on 32, 670 square foot lots, get it approved, turn around and put all accessory apartments. Now you have two families on 32, 670. So you're basically skirting the bylaw. So you really need to put something in there for minimums, you know, because it's going to get out of hand. And all these units that you're adding, you're going to knock the housing units way down. And now you're putting all these, and the units in, your affordability is going to go, it's going to go like this. Because these apartments are not affordable. You're not putting them in under any program. So you can't classify them as affordable units. So that's the other thing you really need to discuss.
So affordability, size, or minimum size, you know, some of the points. If you wanted to say something, Mr. Manzouli?
Yeah, just a few more things. Like Mr. Ryan earlier brought up a, a good point, I guess to the contrary of what he said. Like if he's looking at a house, a single-family house that has an accessory unit existing, you know, the incentive isn't for a potential buyer to be able to basically buy and, I can make it a multifamily, essentially. I mean, that's not the intent of this, is for, it's to have it really remain at the house, like as a single family with an accessory use. And so, I mean, just like anything we can do to, I guess, clarify that so situations like that won't happen because we don't want really, oh, Joe Schmo driving down, oh, you know, Plain Street seeing a home for sale and saying, "A single-family home for sale with an accessory use and saying, oh, I can make a quick buck too, you'll sign me up." And they could pay, you know, part of my mortgage. I mean, that's not the intent of, I don't think what we're trying to do here.
Eliminate a lot of that by putting the relationship back to back in.
And the, the next question would be, what is the minimum requirement that we would need to meet the grant?
As they said, it needs to be allowed over a significant portion of your residential area. And I think, you know, based upon our bylaw before, which was very, I think, stringent, but that's just me, any loosening at all is going to increase the amount of availability regardless. I, I just, I think what they're going to want to see is if we're going to put in like minimum lot requirements, we've got to start looking at lots and seeing, okay, where do these actually, we could say R2, R3, R4, but if there are no R2 lots that meet those minimum requirements, then it really isn't allowed.
I won't put anything in unless you tell me to put it in, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's the concern, like we need to maybe, we need to be able to show DHCD that we, this is actually doable, that it's not, doesn't just exist on paper, that these things can actually be built and be.
So the purpose of this is in order to try and get it in compliance with Governor Baker's housing?
I think both. I think, I think, I think we, there's a need for these, I think there's a need for these.
Yeah, parallel, yeah, exactly.
I think the bylaw is too stringent. I think our bylaw is too stringent. I, I don't know whether I would necessarily say as-of-right if it wasn't for the, the program. Maybe I would do a special permit with less restrictions. But I think, given the fact that, that, that potential exists, it's something we need to think about. Because we're either going to, if, if not, if we can't, the way I see it is, if we can't access this grant money, the cost, we're going to have to do these upgrades because we need to produce more housing. Regardless, and I'm not talking about the housing we're producing through the accessory units, I'm talking about the housing we need to produce according to stay on our housing production plan. And in order to do that, we need to increase the capacity of our utilities. So if we don't have funding from the state to do that through grant money, it's all going to be borne by our residents. So it's, and, and I'm just looking for more creative and alternative ways to raise those funds.
Don't want somebody that's sitting on a 3,000-square-foot lot to put an accessory apartment in.
Correct, yes.
Because it's, there's enough room to park the existing cars there, and they would add another one. So you could probably say by right in some districts and at a minimum lot size, so that you know that there was some safety.
Don't we do that, basically? I mean, like, I live in Wyman Field, like, and I know just, I mean, like, an accessory use apartment, like, on my property would be very challenging to do. I mean, like, I imagine, and I.
Well, there's a lot of non-conforming lots, and those are the ones that are potentially problematic. It's not the new lots or the house that sits on conforming lots, it's the lots that are non-conforming, that were built prior to zoning minimum lot area requirements. They're the ones where you.
But aren't there dimensional requirements anyways that you would have to meet in order to add on?
Yeah, just the yard setback. So you couldn't be, if you were going to add on to your existing bil, residence, and you'd have to be, you couldn't add on to the front if you were in the front yard, you couldn't add on to the side if that would put you in the side yard setback, and you couldn't add on to the rear.
But if you don't have them anyways, so.
But you could also go back, there's another mechanism for that, it's called a variance, and that would be going back to the zoning board.
You could go for a dimensional variance to the board. You could claim that, geez, on one side of my lot, I have ledge, and I couldn't possibly get closer, but if you give me a one-foot variance on the other side, I could put it in there. And that's the circumstance where the board could then consider granting its discretion to a lot of variance. Or there's a pond in the backyard or in the side yard, so I want to be one foot closer on the other side so that I, I maintain a buffer to the pond.
I guess my point is, though, like, in terms of the dimensional requirements, won't that, like, in a way, or maybe this is just very naive of me, but a long dad in a way take care of itself anyways?
It does it with non-conforming lots. It doesn't. It, it does it with a conforming lot, absolutely.
Okay.
But it does it with a non-conforming.
Some lots are small, like my parents' lot, we grew up, it was 90 by 100, 9,000 square foot lot. My house, because I had to meet the new bylaw at the time, is 3/4 of an acre. So I could essentially fit almost four of my, I could, you know, the neighbors I grew up with would be on my lot now, the way it would be. But back then, the houses were very close to one another, and that's what they were. They were just cookie cutter. So that's where it'd be challenging, I think.
And I'd be happy to kind of float a couple of ideas back and forth, and we'll see if we can come up with something that everybody can love.
But what kind of zoning frontage and lot size is what you would consider applicable here?
Well, you'd have to think about it, I mean, what could the area, if they have a large backyard or something?
So it's going to be an individual basis anyway?
Right. I mean, like, say it's going to be within the house, you're not going to increase the, the size of the house.
Well, if I come down, if I come down and, you know, my, my yard shaped a different way, and the next guy, he wants one, am I going to have anything to say about it, or the next neighbors, or?
Once, once this goes through, if it were to go through, and it's an as-of-right zoning, if you meet the setbacks, it's an as-of-right.
Yeah, you're just going to throw a block.
Now you have to go for variance.
There you go.
Right.
I just wondered what size lot.
But I think you need four apartment spots now, because now, if it's not.
You talked about size of the lot, and you talked about frontage. So how much frontage do you need, and what size lot do you need? I mean.
It's probably not an issue of front or, it is lot size.
There's lots of.
Is it going to be according to the size of the house then? Or what's the deal?
It's probably more.
Do you need a frontage and lot size?
It's probably more of a lot size than frontage.
Yeah. Okay, that's fine. I just want to know, we're going to come up with ideas.
Well, part, part of the thing goes back to whether it's going to be within the body of the home that's already there, so then you don't need to add on.
Right.
If you don't need to add on, it's within the body of the home, you probably only have to go through and demonstrate that there's ample parking or some other condition.
Not really what you need.
No, on my part, I just, he just mentioned size.
25.
I'm not asking for.
Wait a minute. I haven't even seen this article.
Right.
I'm just listening to what I'm hearing here, and I'm just throwing these things out.
Okay, that's fine.
I haven't seen any of this.
Okay.
Well, I think Mr. Rube had a good idea with the zoning bylaw review committee, so we'll check the calendar and we'll see if we can set it up and move that, this one in that direction. And then, based on that, we could change the verbiage, and we can still have it as a submission, and we could have the verbiage changed with the council, so.
Because there's two quick questions. One, in terms of going forward, like, in terms of that working group committee, would we be able to come to some realistic expectation in terms of, like, a parking requirement, obviously, as well, so that doesn't throw it all out of whack?
I mean, that's up to the group, I mean.
No, no, but that's obviously, I kind of don't see the issue.
I mean, the group has worked, the group has worked well together in the past.
Yeah.
The group was put in place when we, we had to go through and do housekeeping issues with respect to zoning and articles, because there were things where an applicant came in and we weren't aware of something until an applicant came in and said, "There's no relief for me to do this." So then we would make some, we made some changes. And then we also did the change in the zoning over at Union Point now, that was a big thing. And we met multiple times, and everyone had different ideas, and that was from zoning, planning?
Oh, I love the idea.
So you'd have, we'd have the vote on it?
I, I move that we send this to the zoning bylaw review committee, please.
Second.
All those in favor?
You should resurrect the zoning bylaw use committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. I made that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks. Good job. Sorry to bother.
Oh, that's okay.
Break you over the calls.
Can I just have one more question? Before we come back to this, like, it's.
I need to take a break.
Okay, that's fine. And can we just check with the DHCD to make sure that this, oh, like, any language works for their specifications, I guess?
Well, that's what we talked about prior. We said we have to get what the minimum they're looking for, so we can make sure we can leave satisfied the minimum, so we're not doing it for, so. Okay, we'll take a brief recess. You got to go on. Where's your commercials, Dave?
Got it.
Sorry. We have item number five, the opioid mask tort legislation.
And that's a nice spelling in my heart, but it's litigation.
Litigation, oh.
I, I noticed two this week, obviously, was, I forgot about the holiday, we're in a rush to get the agenda posted.
Should probably get you some crossword books, practice.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We actually had an executive session to discuss this a couple of weeks ago, because a group called the Mass Opioid Litigation Attorneys, and it's a consortium of national and state law firms that are pulling together to bring litigation against the major pharmaceutical companies who certainly played a large role in creating the major opioid crisis that's been a problem throughout the nation. The model of litigation is a little bit different. This is not a class-action lawsuit, and it is basically, every city and town that joins on becomes an individual plaintiff. They will all be basically combined for the purposes of discovery and some of the pre-trial matters in order to save the court's time and energy, rather than having a bunch of individual cities and towns file on cases against these pharmaceutical companies. This particular group has already signed up 33 cities and towns in Massachusetts, there's another 30 that have given a verbal indication that they're on board, and, you know, essentially out of the 351 cities and towns, I think many, many others are considering joining this group. If we are successful, if the board decides to sign on with this litigation, if we are successful, we will be an individual plaintiff, and potentially, if it goes all the way to trial, we would be able to get our, an individual award. Or the more likely outcome is a settlement, and the settlement could be substantial, given the amount of money that is at stake, the amount of money, the amount of profits that these companies made going through this process. The Attorney General's Office in Massachusetts is doing an investigation, but at this point, they have not initiated any of their own litigation. This model of litigation, again, it's not class action. This model was used for something called the MTBE pollution, occurred probably 15 years ago, it was major lawsuits. Again, individual cities and towns sued Exxon, who added this, this particular chemical to their gasoline and end up causing major problems with a lot of cities and towns' water supplies. I was a little skeptical when I saw some of the initial information about this, but when we researched it and we found out that it was actually, one of the principals, Mr. Attorney Sandman was involved in the NTBE litigation, I think it gave it some credibility, at least in my eyes, because they were very successful in getting recoveries for cities and towns back when they filed that, used this approach for a pollution case. Essentially, what we were asked to do was to verify that there is, in fact, no risk for the town if we sign on to this. We cannot be charged any money for expenses. It really is a no-lose proposition for us. I think a lot of people, I think, actually, member of the board, I think, Mike, you actually indicated, you know, how can you not go after these manufacturers, given the, you know, the heartache that they've caused communities and not to mention the, the actual cost, so.
John, this, this time. I mean, just since 2011, we've had 63 opioid-related deaths. We've been hit harder than a lot of communities. I mean, honestly, I, I think it's incumbent on us as a board to, to take action and take a strong stance and support, and go after, you know, these pharmaceutical companies that are essentially killing a generation of people. I've lost classmates, I've lost friends, you know, friends that have family members that have passed. I mean, for me, this feels like a no-brainer. It's, I think it's a great piece of litigation, and I think it's something that Rockland should definitely go after.
Calculating damages in a case like this will not be easy, but beyond the deaths, you have the burden that's placed on our fire department for emergency medical calls, the burden is placed on our police department for the additional crime that's related to it. And again, that doesn't even get into what the cost is to, to families who, who suffer this, with children who have died or children who have lived, and children who continue to live who have these kinds of issues, so. It's probably going to take a long time. We will not be doing the work, my firm will not be doing the work. Basically, we sign on with these people, and we'll be, we'll have to provide data to them at some point to prove our damages, but I do think it's a good approach.
On that same note, if I could, I have already talked to Bridgewater State College about the possibility of using an intern to work with our public safety departments to try and establish some sort of records on behalf of the Town of Rockland.
You know, I, I think we've talked at certain points, Ed, I think it might have been you, one of the first meetings I was at, you know, you suggested that we do something to take action from, from a budgetary standpoint, and I think this is, you know, an opportunity that any money is collected from this, we can put towards more police on the street, we can put towards education, rehabilitation programs potentially. I mean, I, I think this is a great idea, and, like I said, it's something I think we should dive right into, and make a motion that we, we pass it, we adopt it.
Second.
Any other discussion?
I just want to mention, like, it's, oh, you know, echoing those comments, it's, it's incredibly shameful how the pharmaceutical companies, like, can really market it, and, I mean, you know, done a lot of their, oh, promotion work over the past 10, 15 years especially, and, you know, again, to, you know, to continue our work with, like, the local families and to let them know that, like, we always have tried as a town to work side by side with our EMS, with our police, with our firefighters, and all the school system as well, to deal with these issues and to address them. I agree, this is a good step, so.
Okay. I agree that it's a good step as well, although you can never put a dollarary value on loss of life. There has been some, some news articles out there about opioid manufacturers have actually decided to scale back, and, which I think is a good thing. We're seeing a little bit of retreat on the overdose side, but that may be attributed more to the accessibility of knock-ins. And I know there was an article out recently that showed Rockland just portionally in comparison to other communities, so, and this is the very least we could do for, you know, those residents that we lost, never mind the survivors who were behind, so. I know there was a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Hi.
An unanimous vote, thank you, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, Councilor.
Okay. Next up on the agenda, item number six, NIP Committee Report Discussion of Legislation. That one's spelled right, right?
Yes, it is.
The NIP Committee is beside me, to my left.
And the chairperson is?
Right there.
All right, Mr. Chairman. So our NIP working group has met twice. We've set up short-term, medium-term, and long-term goals. One of our long-term goals was to try to establish some sort of special state legislation to add NIPS to the bottle bill, and lo and behold, there's one pending, which is great. House Bill 3528, an act promoting the proper disposal of miniatures. It has come out of committee, I believe it's been, may have been referred to Ways and Means, but I need to check. So we, I'm now a member of a Energy and Environmental Subcommittee of MMA, and we took a vote last week to support this on behalf of the MMA, and I would, I mean, we can discuss it, but what I'd like to move for is to get either a vote or a letter, a resolution of some sort from this board to support this bill, to add miniatures to the bottle bill, to help with our long-term issue in regards to littering.
Any discussion?
I think that's a great idea. I would make that motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Right.
A unanimous vote, thank you.
And I know, I think I was the first one to bring up the issue of NIPS with the board after walking the rail trail, but this weekend, my wife went walking in our own neighborhood, and we're nowhere near a liquor store, but she, we do, we're a subdivision off Main Street, but we're a corner lot, and she was getting tired of the litter, and with no prompting at all, she came back, she says, "I can't believe the number of NIPS that are just thrown out." Everybody doesn't want to get stopped with an open container.
Right.
Those people who might be partaking while they're driving, apparently. And she was shocked. I said, "I mentioned this legislation."
Deidre, you mentioned you guys established some short-term goals.
Mm-hmm.
What are they doing currently?
Sure, so.
Because I've driven by a couple of them, I think I relayed a story to you and Larry about the 26 I counted in the parking lot.
Correct.
And another one, one that was very, spoke very positively about helping solve this. I drove behind their store, and all along the parkway, there was just everywhere, so.
Yep. So, so far, only three of our five licensees have attended. They are, actually, some of them are already passing out materials within their store, asking people to throw them away because the Rockland Board of Selectment is, you know, potentially will ban them. I actually got a text from a friend of mine, kind of joking around, saying, "Please don't take my NIPS." But the word's getting out, and they are, we're talking about our medium-term goal of establishing a branding campaign of how to clean up, and maybe if it's successful, extending it to coffee cups and other types of issues. And also, they're going to look to help assist with cleanup funds along some of the public easement areas where we have our biggest problems, which includes some of the paths behind Loops, as well as over by the rail trail.
Sure.
However, some of the larger offenders that, that I think, over by Selshur Taekwondo, However, some of the larger offenders that, I think, over by Seljou or Taekwondo, we haven't had that person show up for the meeting.
They're also the rail trail, right?
I'm sorry?
Are they also the one by the rail trail?
Yeah, and the one by the rail trail, yes, they have not shown up at the meeting, which is obviously problematic, and we need to think about what we're going to do in response to that, but at least for the people who are participating, I think it's a great effort of coordination between our licensees and business community, government, so, and we'll get some of the high schoolers involved and the scouts and all that to help with the cleanup, so.
Well, at the very least, if the bill does pass, it may not deter some people from littering, but at least the people, such as your wife, who wants to come to the rail trail and pick it up, at least she'll make some money for it. But, no, all can aside, I mean, that's the idea behind it, that was the idea behind the bottle bill. Sometimes it took time, but most people, you know, not only recycle, but they actually return their bottles and cans.
I would take this moment to remind the chairman that as a young state representative, I was a co-sponsor of the original bottle bill.
One of those.
Way back.
So regarding the bottle bill now.
About 43 years ago.
I was going to say.
So, if I go down to a cookout and I have my beers and I take the empties and I put them in a paper bag, and I put them in the backseat of my car, and I drive home and I get stopped, and he looks in the back and says, "You have open containers."
Put them in your trunk.
Yeah.
I don't have a trunk. I got a truck.
Put them in the back of the truck.
They fly out, and now I'm littering.
I thought you bagged them.
No, I went right out the back, I'm just saying.
Recycling at the party, you're right.
That's part of the problem. Problem is, if the police want to, they can say, "You have an open container," and then you're in trouble when you're doing the right thing by trying to recycle. And the reason that they throw them on the ground is because, A, they don't want them in the car if the car's stopped, but if they're bagged or anything like that, you know, neatly folded up, I guess, I don't know, is there an answer to that? That's the main reason they throw them out to start with.
And put a cap on them.
Well, the NIPS have a cover, yeah.
Yeah, but if the NIP has a cover and you put the cover back on, you have to give them, I can get a bottle of beer and do the same thing.
Throw them away where you.
Get my bottle of wine and put the cork back in.
Throw them away where you drink them, right?
Well, but you don't, because you're in your car.
What? You're drinking a drink.
Bringing them home.
I know, just leaving at the party.
You're bringing them home. That's what I meant, to say, you're bringing them home. Been someplace and you collected the candy and you bring them home, and you get in trouble.
I think marijuana's going to help you, Larry, because you can smoke it and it'll be gone, you don't have to worry about it.
The rest of the state is going to be the same issue, too.
I would imagine.
Again, I'll all can aside, you're right, there's going to be issues with marijuana in the future, and we don't know what they're going to be, and we also have to learn what mechanisms are going to be out there to actually test people to see if they're under the influence, and all that stuff's still developing. But all can aside, I mean, it's up to people to be responsible and not to litter and not to do things. And, you know, the bottle bill's a small piece of it, hopefully, we see something that, at the very least, at least the people who are picking this stuff up can collect something for their endeavors, but, and some people, because of that nickel, they'll return it because they want that nickel, so. You won't get them all, but hopefully, it'll help circumvent it from us having to go through with an outright ban in our town, so. We're going to move right along now. We've nipped that one to the warrant article proposals on Agenda Item Number Eight.
All right, Mr. Chairman, the front of those warrant articles, and once again, we'll defer to Selectman Hall, she has drafted up two very lengthy articles regarding stormwater provisions, and I will defer, there are two articles in front of the warrant book itself, seeking some sort of endorsement from the board, at least moving forward. I know that you've all, I tried to read these, and I went to sleep, but, no, I'm joking, but Ms. Hall would, if you remember, her presentation would know more on the stormwater provisions, if I might?
Mr. Chairman, so what I've drafted here is, it's, I guess it's, I don't know if I split it into two, it could be one by law, but it breaks up the stormwater provisions into basically three distinct categories. The first deals with illicit discharges, which is something we're doing very well already, even though we don't have the bylaw there. In my comments there, I mentioned that we had been out of compliance with NIPDs, but I should be more precise to say we are out of compliance with portions of NIPDs, which is Minimum Control Measures Four and Five, which is what the second half of this bylaw deals with.
NIPD stands for?
The National Pollution Discharge Elimination System.
Thank you.
So that's the MS4 permit. So the first section deals with what can go in the storm drain, basically, and it defines all the words that are going to come in this bylaw, and I apologize for all the definitions, it's just, unfortunately, it's what it is. But it deals with who's going to enforce it, so, and on what can go in the storm, what can go into the stormwater, the stormwater system. So if you go to Article Two of the bylaw, Prohibitive Activities, that's what tells you what can't go in it. So illicit discharges, no person can dump, discharge, spill, so you can't put things that are not stormwater into the stormwater system, and the way they define what is not stormwater is by defining exemptions, so. Things you are allowed to discharge that wouldn't be stormwater flow are water from firefighting, water line flushing, flow from potable water sources, springs, flow from wetlands, diverted stream flow, groundwater, things from drains, sump pumps, we have, if you're emptying your swimming pool, but you're dechlorinating it, you got to make sure you dechlorinate it before you empty it, water from street sweeping, any type of dye testing without permission, so it's basically, you can, those things are prohibitive discharges. And to be honest, our sewer department has done a good job enforcing those to date, even though we don't have this bylaw in effect. When we find an illicit connection, for instance, between the sewer and the drain, we're pretty good at removing that, which is good. There's a little bit here about pet waste, obviously, pet waste isn't allowed into the stormwater system, issues about certain pavement sealers, that can be pollutants under the permit. There is an issue for, that the Stormwater Authority, which at this point is defined as also, although we can talk about that, that we can suspend someone's use of the drain system when we need to, so a good situation for this may have been, you know, let's say there was a chemical fire, and we were putting water out and we were firefighting, but the water discharged right into a stream and caused a massive fish kill, right, because it was some kind of chemicals. I'm not saying we have to, I'm saying we have the option to, say, we can block the storm drains and push it upstream or something. Talks about who needs to be notified for spills, who, what the enforcement mechanisms are when there's a violation, allows for a 21D ticket, which is written by our building inspector, and also for a civil right of action. And all that stuff, as much as it's confusing, we're kind of doing that. John Loughlin has been doing that when he comes across either test results that indicate that there's something in the stormwater that shouldn't be there, or visual evidence that indicates that something in the stormwater shouldn't be there, so he's been good at that. The Article Three, which is the Stormwater Management and Land Disturbance portion, is something we haven't done. What this does, if you remember my presentation, is that if a community, a community can pass a bylaw in regards to land disturbance, and the permit requires you to set it at at least an acre, so should we disturb, or a private landowner disturb more than an acre, they have to submit erosion and sediment control plans, and they have to submit plans in regards to stormwater treatment, on how they're going to deal with their stormwater. They're already doing some of this, large projects are already doing some of this as part of our planning board regulations, because our planning board reviews for the state's stormwater standards. However, the permit coming up in July is actually going to set the standards more stringent than what the state currently sets it at, because the permit's from the federal EPA. So that's why it's really important that we pass this, because even if we are catching some of these, we're not catching all, but if we're catching some of these in the planning board stage, they're reviewing it at that state level of compliance, which for right now, we're okay, but come July 1, there'll be more stringent requirements. So that's basically what that whole next section does. I want to talk to planning about it, to see if they may be the proper permit granting authority on the land disturbance and stormwater management side of things, just because they already have a 53G account, they're already reviewing these for state stormwater standards. So the only difference would be that their consultant, Brennan, I think his name is?
Pat Brennan.
Pat Brennan, he would just need to review for a more stringent standard, that's all. It would, instead of reviewing for the one inch, he would review for, I think it's one inch of infiltration or 0.80 TSS, or 80% TSS removal. So, it's already being done, like I said, we're not catching all of them, this bylaw would allow us to catch all of them, I just haven't had the chance to get in front of planning on this scheduled to be on their agenda next Tuesday, I think it is, or next Monday, to talk to them, to make sure that they're okay. Initially, I approached CONCOM, but that they were, they were a little bit reluctant because they're afraid that it's going to increase their cases, the amount of cases they're getting, but because I set it at the, you know, the highest threshold I could, I mean, some communities are setting this at 5,000 square feet, if you disturb 5,000 square feet, you have to go through all this craziness. I think an acre is sufficient, because it can, it is a cost burden to development, and, you know, given that we're trying to redevelop our downtown, I think we should be striking a balance there between what's important for the environment and also what's important economically for the community. So I think that setting it at an acre is less likely to increase the caseload significantly, so, but I'm hoping Planning Board will be willing to take this on. John Lucas initially has said, "Okay," but I, obviously, I want to bring it before the board.
Any questions?
I just have one quick question, Dieter, thank you, this is, Article Two, under Section Six at the end, the commission, is that like the Rockland Sewer Commission?
Yes, no, you want to know what that is? I have, and actually, in this draft that Attorney Galvin reviewed, I have a couple of misreferences.
Okay.
Because originally, I've drafted this before for other communities, and originally, some other communities use their CONCOM as the authority, so that's why there's a different reference, but I, it should, all of those should say the Stormwater Authority.
Authority, okay.
And if you look through the draft one, that Attorney Galvin pointed out those oversights to me, I think it's, I think there may be four of them.
Attorney Galvin has reviewed this as well, so, but as has been tradition with individual members, this has to come before the board for approval for inclusion in the warrant.
This makes perfect sense, and I can just also add, I mean, like, I just know from my experience in work, whether you have an apartment that water, watershed, that, I mean, like, you're basically, I mean, what you, and like, a lot of this is your template that's been adopted in many other communities, and now that we have you bring into here, I think, well, they're lucky for it, so, thank you.
We do need to come into compliance.
So it's a compliance bylaw, even though sewer departments are already in compliance, have been working, implementing something similar, this would actually put its writing so that any new applicant or anything, they know what the rules are. We're very fortunate with the sewer commissioner, the sewer department head we have now, John Loughlin, but at some point, John may move on, and maybe the next person may not do as well as John, so we need something in writing.
Well, and this is another one of these things, that it's another burden, obviously, we're going to have to find a way to do it, but we are, under federal, I don't want to say guideline, mandate to comply, and I know, for example, the schools have to deal with, Mike, as you know, some of the special education laws, and some of these costs just keep getting put on communities, and I know the schools face it, even on this side of the aisle, this is one of the mandates we're being faced with, that we have to provide.
I did want to say, the bylaw references the meat, this isn't even the meat of the information, the meat is in some regulations that are twice as long as this bylaw, that really deal with the engineering portion of what needs to be done, what's, and this bylaw will allow us to publish those regulations and change them as necessary. What's great is that if the regulation, if the permit gets put off again, which could happen, then the standards remain what is the Massachusetts handbook, so it won't be a big change for Planning Board, it won't, it won't really substantively change anything. It will have something in writing that says what we're supposed to be doing, but it won't substantively change what we're doing, but if it does get passed, we can, we can adjust the regulations accordingly, which will be good, and then we just publish them for two weeks.
Can I just ask one off the wall question? Is this the same issue that the state is actually talking about taking over?
Yes, that's a great discussion, so, we are one of four, I think, I heard the other day, maybe three, so another state may have decided to delegate, but we are one of originally four states that, where this function is not delegated to our State Department of Environmental Protection, where we are permit, we get our permit directly from the EPA. A lot of the environmental groups prefer that, but a lot of municipal groups would rather get it from Mass DEP, because they understand what our municipalities are dealing with better than EPA, and I believe that Mass DEP would do a great job implementing this program. However, the funding for Mass DEP has not really shown up in the budget.
They're very shorthanded.
Yeah, so this program would require millions and millions of additional dollars, and Mass DEP continues to have their budget cut on an annual basis, so until there's an influx of funding into Department of Environmental Protection at state level, it'll be really difficult to delegate this to the state.
We have a number of issues where we are talking with DEP, and whether it's the Park and Howard Street and discharge and on and on and on, testing results from SD's DEP, I've witnessed, since I've been here, a reduction in manpower, and certainly, it's no less dedication on the part of the employees that remain, but they are shorthanded, so. But we would need a vote to include this article.
I made the motion, did you want to?
No, I'll make that motion, thank you.
Second. All those in favor?
So we have a new article.
Okay, well, we can add it now, and Ms. Hall, thank you very much for drafting that up, I'm glad that no one said, "Mr. Chaka, please draft up the stormwater article."
Item number eight, we're going to continue with the warrant article proposals.
Now, we're going to continue with the warrant article proposals, and with us tonight, making a special guest appearance, is Town Accountant Eric Hart. All of the articles by all the departments are reminded that those who have not submitted them yet must be in by March 1st. And then what happens is Eric and Sue I collect those and put together the warrant articles. We do not number them permanently yet, because some boards come in with additional articles, et cetera, so there is a list, and so what we're asking you to do is review this list. Some of them will be on special town meeting, which is not open yet, so we're not discussing those tonight, but they are placeholders, because it involves funding, which we would like to get moving on prior to the beginning of the next fiscal year, we'd like to get some of these things done this fiscal year. So at the annual town meeting, page four in the draft warrant, not the final warrant, we want to go over the article goals. Eric, I don't know if there's anything if we want to go through those, but by way of explanation, obviously, it's the town elections, elective office, another article, and I'll follow, I'll follow along, Eric, I guess, at this point. Elected offices, salaries and compensation, the budgets for the Board of Selectment, we still have to submit a couple, we're waiting on some of the items to be reported to us so we can plug them in. Revolving accounts, I'm not quite sure on how many, we had a spirited debate at one point on revolving accounts, we'll be asking for another one next week, but they get renewed each and every year in this article.
And I distinguish any new ones within that article.
As you can see, we had a placeholder in for the marijuana, adoption of marijuana bylaws, the fire department is asking for an alert system, there's a master plan article for us to participate in developing the master plan, as you know, we've done housing, we've done the 40-hour, in the middle of open space, and recreation review, we want to move towards developing a master plan, which now, I believe, is almost 15 years old, if not longer. Rail trail extension, we're trying to complete the rail trail, we've received rave reviews, ADA compliance, that's in order to try and match an upcoming round of grants from the state, as you noticed, all of our doors in the public buildings, the automatic door openers, et cetera, handles, we're doing what we can to come into compliance with ADA requirements. Park and Recreation has improvements, information technology upgrades, as we're constantly fighting the battle to try and stay as upgraded and. the battle to try and stay as upgraded and cyber secure as possible. The highway department has a request in for guardrails and service to a truck body. Tree Warden also has a truck, tree service body, he wants to get some work done. The school department has a number of articles, including computer replace and upgrade, lease payments for venues, a walk-in cooler freezer, a bus lease for 15-passenger vehicle, a dump plow truck, an Esten School repavement project, a Mark to Cruiser school security, a ride-on-floor scrubber for the school department, and a night lockdown class devices, so that, I'm not quite sure, and we'll get explanation at some point, but some of these requests have to come in, and we have to wait for free cash, amongst other things, for some of them, or some of them, we may be able to do within the existing budget. The fire department has a pump lease payment due. There is an article for new firefighter gear, bulletproof vests, and that says Fire Department, is that accurate, Eric?
Definitely not. Oh, no, I'm sorry, yes, it is, on that department. They are looking to protect their men, as they're heading up to some of these calls, now that they're answering a lot of the opioid problems. This actually is one of those type of expenditures, you know, they could end up in a house where there was a drug deal, someone's dead on the floor, they don't know what they're walking into, and they need the protection.
There's a resident petition to change a zoning bylaw. There's a mandated reevaluation, which, you know, we have to do every three years from the Board of Assessors. There is a request, and this, we're hoping, will be a one-time request, and we do not know if we need it, but it is a placeholder to maintain the Meals on Wheels program. Peg Bryan came to me maybe a week or 10 days ago. Apparently, North River Collaborative is no longer going to supply the kitchen help down at the senior center. This also means that there's no one there to prepare the Meals on Wheels, or the meals that a number of seniors are using. I believe she's doing 30 to 40 meals in-house, and she's doing approximately the same number that are going out on the Meals on Wheels program. With North River Collaborative pulling out of that program, we are exploring other options. I know she was talking with Brockton today, there's a program that might be able to take over some of the Meals on Wheels aspect of it, and we are talking with South Shore Vocational to see if there isn't some sort of collaborative program we can do with them and their students in their culinary program, whether it's a work-study, one or two days a week, or on a rotating basis, but we hope to get back. Tom Hickey was the superintendent at the South Shore Vocational, was, you know, very willing to come over, met with Peg, so we don't know what the answer will be, but again, we had to get the article in in order to hold the place, and certainly, I believe that the board would want to maintain the Meals on Wheels program. We're going to make it happen by hook or by crook. This may be a one-year extension or expenditure, if only to provide us the amount of time we need to get a program in place and up and funded. There is a request here that I put in for the Board of Selectmen, and there is a sliver of land that is screwing up some developmental property up off of Waymouth Street, that when they redesign the road in an intersection, it left a, what was it, 200-square-foot diagonal piece of whatever in front of this piece of property that could be worth as much as $5,000 in a one-time deal, has absolutely no value to the town. So there will probably only be one interested buyer, but of course, we will advertise and ask for bids. And at that point, I would ask the board to approve those articles.
You need to add the SOAR one onto the list.
It's on, you did it. The Stormwater was already done.
I'm sorry, I just have one thing. My name is spelled wrong on the warrant on page eight, I just wanted to make sure that it's corrected before you fix the.
Page eight?
I think that's, whatever's page eight, spelled wrong on page eight. I have two Rs.
There's two Rs in Deirdre?
Yeah, otherwise, it's Deirdre, I'm Deirdre.
Deirdre.
D-E-I-R-D-R-E.
We will fix that.
Thank you.
Also, I just wanted to mention, too, that sometimes articles come in after the fact, and I know you're going to be opening up and closing the special town meeting warrant, but probably, if we have anything, present them to you at that point in time. And some of the wording may change slightly on these articles, but the main purpose of all of them will be retained.
We had a motion, and we had a second. All those in favor? The vote, the unanimous, thank you. Okay, next up, we have, thank you, Eric.
I wanted to add one thing, if I could, please. When we went through the operating budget a couple of weeks ago, I just wanted to mention that I had been hit with some information at the Health Department level regarding some increases that they had, and thought it was going to be applied to the total tonnage that they had, and that it was going to create an issue where they were going to have to increase their rates. I jumped to the conclusion way too early on that one, it was only on a small portion of their tonnage, which will not affect their rates in any great way whatsoever, and typically, they turn back money at the end of the year anyways, so they should be able to cover that, so I misspoke, and I want to make sure that that was corrected on the record.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
We've got seven candidates for the Board of Health now, because.
They almost got you in their own trash bin, too. All right, next up, item number 10, Town and Ministry's report and correspondence, Mr. Chaka.
I have no additional correspondence today.
Well, then, we move right along, that made Dave very happy. We move right along to selectmen's comments. Comments and opinions expressed by individual members do not necessarily reflect the views of the Board of Selectmen. Now, the opinions and comments of only the individual member. With that, Mr. Loughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We spoke earlier during the tort litigation about substance abuse in Rockland and the deaths that have come from that. Rockland Cares, a group that we have in town, an excellent group, they've put together a lot of research as of late, and they are holding an open lunch on Tuesday, March 6th, at 11:30 at Player's Sports Bar, where they've drawn some correlation, pulled out some numbers about the 63 deaths, and that 55 of the 63 were employed, were full-time employees with the company, and 33 of the 63 were employed in the trades, and there's a great breakdown that they're putting together to kind of explain substance use prevention training for people in the town. So if you can attend, 11:30 on March 6th at Player's. And also, during that week, March 4th through March 9th, is Restaurant Week, I mentioned that last meeting. Most of the restaurants are giving their menus as of right now, I'm looking at them now, and I'm forwarding them off. With that, we've talked to several restaurants that would like to hang banners uptown, or in front of their establishment, and Tom Rubel, Zoning Enforcement, suggested that we make a motion to allow that for that week, a variance for that week.
The week before.
Oh, the week before, and that week, so it'd be, what, yeah, February 27th, 26th through March 9th.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? So, thank you.
Good job, guys.
That's it.
Okay, Ms. Hall.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I just wanted to mention to everyone on Friday, the Park Group, which is the group that helped fund, or helped fundraise for the playground that's now at Hartz IV, is having an ice cream for breakfast for kids from 8 to 12 at Jack's Cafe, and the fundraising, the funds are to be used to pay off the school lunch debt of kids in the Rockland Public Schools. So it's a great, it's a great opportunity, come out and help your own, I'll be there, I'm going to be scooping some ice cream, so come on out and have.
Is there a speech requirement?
I don't think there is one, Alan, but it's, my kids are excited, and just a treat for the kids over February vacation, so bring your kids out. I think it might be $5 if you order tickets in advance, and $7 at the door.
Did you say Friday?
It's Friday, yep, it's from 8 to noon. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Mr. Ryan?
Just one thing, I want to take the time out to congratulate Austin Dillon for winning the Daytona 500. He's sponsored by Dow Chemical, who, that division is run by our son Larry and his wife Laura Duffy, and if you look at all the things that were on TV the other day, they were prominently in the background, and quite a few of them celebrating. They're sort of the owners, if you will, of, because they backed them financially, and it was great that they won the Daytona 500, and if you're out there listening, Larry, all the guys, all the NASCAR guys want some good souvenirs when you come back.
What do you need, Nips?
There are no Nips in this guy. I took him at mic.
There's actually a very good story. He's the grandson of Dale Earnhardt, and 20 years prior, Dale Earnhardt won his only Daytona 500, and he was actually shown in pictures, so it was kind of, you know, a special moment for that family.
Yep, very special for a lot of people, actually, it's a big deal, you know? I told him I want a ring. Don't they get the 500 ring? No?
It's a Super Bowl. Yeah.
But anyway, I just wanted to say that, and that's all I have for tonight, that's enough.
Mr. Mullen?
Just really quick, last week, the Rockland Chamber had their annual breakfast, there was the CEO of Upper Baby, which just opened on Waymouth Street, it's, you know, I didn't, there's a lot of people who had a lot to do with that business, are coming back to town, and like, hearing him, hearing why that he and his family and his company wanted to be in Rockland was very encouraging and enlightening, and then, like, I gave, like, a very brief highlight of our efforts, like, with our downtown revitalization with Reimagine Rockland, which went well, I think, and I hope. But after that, also, I had the chance to talk with Senator Keenan and Rep. Dave Decoast about the challenges that we mentioned earlier, just in terms of addressing our, you know, our housing needs, I mean, growth, but we're fairly limited in terms of, you know, the utilities and the other challenges, and Senator Keenan was very much on board in terms of working to help, Dave Decoast was open to it as well, so there'll be a little bit of, like, a process going forward, but they really understood, you know, what we want to do, that we actually want to have growth and to move forward, and we're not like other communities who, you know, who don't want to deal with anything and just hide in the sand, so that was helpful. And then, lastly, I want to commend both the Rockland Police, actually, all of our public safety, but especially the police and the school department for how they handled everything last Friday. You know, like, I'm sure, like, everyone in town, you know, as soon as I heard about it, it was pretty scary to know that, you know, that that was happening, or that there was a lockdown here, and, you know, that there was, you know, like, a potential incident, but, you know, how everything was handled, how everything was really communicated, I thought, you know, how I watched the press conference with the chief and with the school superintendent on the way home, and once again, you know, you hate to say this, but, you know, like, a very, very challenging, frightening, and a tough day in Rockland, became also something that you could tell the planning, the, just that everything went into it, and that it was handled extremely well, and again, it was a, just very frightening, but, you know, the people who work for this town, the people who are invested here, you know, they care, you know, they care about protecting the kids and everyone, and that was very much evident last Friday and every day, so I just want to thank them, so that's all I have, that's Jim.
Thank you. It's certainly no way to start a school vacation, by any means. And again, I had spoke with both Ellen Crone, our superintendent, and Chief John Lawellin after the incidents, and commended them as well for how they handled it on behalf of the town. That's a parent's worst nightmare, regardless of, you know, any outcome or anything like that, I mean, there's a definite fear, and there's a definite, we'll say, change in our country now going on. There's been far too many of these incidents, you know, and it's really, I mean, we hope that something can happen, and I guess it's going to take, you know, the survivors to push us adults to make those tough decisions and make change. It's been something that, you know, I know, over the years, there's been a multitude of these incidents that, and when does it stop, I guess, is the answer, the question, and the answer, I guess, is we have to ask ourselves, you know, how can we help stop it? I know, you know, our country is brought up on a lot of different things, in the Constitution, the right to bear arms, but when our forefathers, you know, thought about the right to bear arms, they weren't talking about assault weapons, in my opinion, and I'm not saying people shouldn't have the right to bear arms, but obviously, with the influx of guns and things out there, we're not going to get them all off the streets, so we have to change the culture, and part of that is speaking with Ellen Crone's, you know, communication, the students, they have to tell one another when things happen, and it's tough, you know, breaking that code, but, you know, you talk about little things like zoning, and the only way you know there's an infraction is because you've got a neighbor who communicates that to a board, and it's the same thing with students. If you see something or you hear something, you have to, you have to approach adults and let them know, because the only way things can be prevented in the future is by people knowing, then taking action. And I know that can be difficult at times, because nobody wants to be the person who outs someone else, but someone else could possibly save your own life in the future, so you have to really consider that, and it's tough with peer pressure and things like that, but we need to provide safer places for our kids to learn, we need to provide opportunities, as much as we do, you know, we all work together as a board to make changes to the town, which we think are for the better, whether they're tweaking zoning, or going through trying to regulate marijuana, or talking about NIPS, or talking about different things to make Rockland better, and also, we rely heavily on the residents, and even on the younger residents, and that starts with the kids, so we're all doing it for the same reason, so we really need to think about how we can make changes, and it might be something nationwide, I mean, I don't know if it's something that we need to look at at some point in the future, you know, if we have things that we can actually go through and we need to add to our police department. Nobody ever thought of going to school and having a policeman stationed at the door, but if that's what it's going to take, the people have to feel safe, and so that they can learn and become better citizens, well, then we have to look at, you know, opening up to those ideas. If it means the military or something else, as much as that sounds far-fetched, I mean, we have to consider calling in people to help and do things to make communities better. And I'm not saying by any means that Rockland's at that brink, I mean, the incident was an isolated incident, and thank God, there was nothing else that came of it, but as communities and states and, you know, across the nation, we're going to start thinking about ways that we can fix this problem, and it's going to take collaboration between the people we're trying to help, and also, because mental illness, obviously, is something that, you know, plays a part in all of this, and we have to be more diligent in making sure we can try to get people help, but aside from that, we also have to be respective of one another and know that, you know, if someone's doing something wrong, we have to let them know that it's not okay to do something wrong, and we have to either get them help, or we have to find ways to hopefully prevent these things from happening. We talked about bylaws a little bit tonight, and as you read through the article, there's a citizen petition in response to Larry, how do things happen? If they can't recall you, sometimes they come up with a citizen's petition, so, to change an article, and we're not going to say it's right or wrong, that's to be debated on town meeting floor. Everyone's entitled to their viewpoint, but as a board, we try to take the best information that's available to us at that time, and we try to come up with ideas and things we can implement, whether they're bylaws, or regulations, or licenses, anything like that that's going to hopefully advance the community. the community. And that's, that's the best we can do. Not to say that five years from now, 10 years from now, you know, that things need to change again, because obviously, things change. And we need to be able to change either ahead of it or be behind it. And I always like the front view than the tail view, so we try to at least take the front-end approach. I mean, we had talked before that some communities outright banned marijuana. We, on the other hand, are trying to face it head-on and try to come up with something that's going to work for our residents. And it'll probably be a benefit for those residents in those communities that don't have the opportunity to have it in their communities, because their local boards chose not to make the tough decisions. So thinking of that, it is school vacation week. We do have some good weather, so be careful out there. Enjoy the good weather, because we don't know when the groundhog's coming back to make it cold again on us, you know? So with that, that's all I have, and thank you. Do we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, shoot all groundhogs.
Second. All those in favor? Aye, there's four, and we're missing one. I think he adjourned himself. Thank you all, and have a good night.